What happened, just walking or something? You heard something?
I don't know if it was outside of that or, uh, you see how I was.
Were you just walking or something?
I was out.
You felt something? Ever since that day, it hasn't felt right. Okay. Right.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is, um, Mr. Markey gonna be here tonight?
I don't believe so, but, um, Robert will be about just a few minutes later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Something they can clean up and just go home.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hoping for.
I'll no more.
So let me know.
A week and a half or something.
Okay, what'd you do? Are we up and running, Jerry? Are we good? Are you ready? I call the Norton City Council Committee Work Session for Tuesday, February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Gaynor?
Here.
Mr. McLone?
Here.
Mr. Carrot?
Here.
Mr. Towesley?
Here.
Ms. Whipke?
Ms. Whipke is excused.
Mr. Pilat?
Here.
Mr. Kernan?
Here.
Moving on to public comment, Mr. Casey.
Joe Casey, thirty-one forty-one Monterey Drive. I like to reserve mine until later on in the evening.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, moving on to Committee of the Whole, um, before we get started on Committee of the Whole, I did just want to, uh, make a quick statement. I know that there were some flyers or some information that went out on East- Eastern Road today. Uh, I want to assure the citizens that that did not come from the city of Norton. Um, there was some false information on that. Um, there is no plan at this point to assess anyone for any sidewalks. Um, so that is incorrect information. Um, I did get a call from a resident earlier and I explained that to them. Um, we are, um, doing some engineering to try and receive some grants, um, to do some sidewalks. We've talked about doing that if we would get some grants, um, but there is absolutely no plan, uh, on councilor and the administration as far as I know, um, to assess anyone for any sidewalk, so I just wanted to make that clear. Does anyone else have any comments about that? I, I don't know how many of us heard about it, but I, like I said, I got a call earlier today from a resident.
I also had two calls today and was, uh, visited at church in the aisle over the same issue, so I had three. And there was all the same thing, uh, misinformation that was intentionally put out in mailboxes. Conveniently, my mailbox was skipped.
And again, I, you know, I received phone calls as well. I'd like to reiterate to the public, you know, do exactly that. Call your council people. Call the administration if you receive something like that. Ninety-nine, if not a hundred percent of the time, when you get something that's signed anonymous, it, it's not even worth the paper it's written on, so if you want the, the facts behind what it is, you know, make sure that you call the city or something. Don't, don't get all upset because that's all they're after.
All right. Having said that, then we will move on to, um, item A, um, application for renewal of agricultural districts. We have two of those, um, and those go to Mr. Gaynor.
Yes, I just want to, uh, offer Resolution twenty-six and twenty-seven under consent agenda to be moved to next week's council meeting for, uh, public hearings.
All right, so I have a motion to put those on next week's council.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Is there any further discuss- discussion? Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. Carrot?
Yes.
Mr. McLone?
Yes.
All right, moving on to letter B, um, OPWC grant applications, um, is under finance, um, that's ordinance twenty-eight, two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Whipke is not here, um, so I will take care of that. This is, um, just an ordinance that, that is allowing the administration, um, to apply for those, uh, grants. Um, Mayor, Mr. Messner, do you have anything to add to that or any council members? Okay. Um, so again, um, again, this is just merely to apply for the grants. No money is being spent here at this point, um, and this, anything that comes of this would come back to us again, uh, for council to take a look at. So I will move to place Resolution twenty-eight, two thousand and nineteen on council's next agenda for first reading.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Charlotte had, uh, just, uh, a comment that she indicated that the assessments levied against the properties, if it goes through, would be on the construction aspect only. Is that true?
Maybe we can get that clarified before the reading and stuff for next week.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. And, um, again, this is, um, actually for some waterline projects and Barbara Road's, uh, storm sewer and reconstruction project of Worcester Road and all of those that we've been talking about, so. Um, any further discussion? Will the clerk call the roll, please, on that?
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Moving on to letter C, this is authorization to purchase a two thousand and nineteen Durango in an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars. This, again, would fall to finance, um, so I'll go ahead and take care of this. Um, this is the truck for zoning, is that correct? Uh, and that's what this one is for, Mr. Pilat?
Weren't we, weren't we gonna go with the Ford because it's lower?
A little, yes, there is a little bit.
Like a thousand dollar savings?
Yes, yes.
So, I know that the Ford, um, was, would be purchased through Montrose Ford.
Correct.
The Durango, if we bought it, would be purchased through Fred Martin.
Fred Martin, correct.
And you said that the difference is right around a thousand or less than a thousand dollars?
Correct.
You know, I, and, and I understand saving money and I understand saving, trying to save as much as possible, but you, you know, Fred Martin is a local business. Um, they give us a lot. They give us, you know, dare vehicles, they give us car washes, they give us oil changes, I think, at times for different things. I would not have a problem with going through Fred Martin because it's a local business. I'm just throwing it out there, see what council thinks.
And at one point in time, uh, what is the percentage that we give? Two percent? So what is that? That's only, it's like two, two seventy? Or four? No.
Is that right?
So, it'd be a little less than, than that because by being a local company, we give consideration, uh, for that and allow a two percent reduction in whatever their bid price is. I mean, doesn't allow us to pay two percent less, but that's what we do for, for bids.
Both of them are very good vehicles and I think either one would work very well for, uh, for the city of Norton. I think it's just at this point, we gave you both options and, or both options of either one, so, but.
I, I would also rather buy it from Fred Martin due to the fact that just on the services that they provide for us for nothing would more than make up for seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. Plus, we have all their income tax from their employees being generated there. Uh, anything that we can do to cooperate with a business that's in the city limits, I think seven hundred and fifty dollars is a minor difference in cost and we should go with the original proposal.
I believe that's why we, we, there was some discussion in the beginning and I think that's why we originally went with that, but like you said, if, if the hangup was a thousand bucks, um...
Well, again, you know, I mean, if it was five or ten thousand dollars, obviously that makes it, that, that's a huge difference. Um, and, and I'm not, and I'm not trying to minimize trying to save money for the city, I get that too. The only, the only question I would have and would want to make sure, I mean, however we move this tonight, um, if we move the, the Durango on, I, I would just want to make sure that we can legally accept that bid if it is a thousand dollars more than Montrose Ford. And I don't know the answer to that, so we could, we can get that answer.
Okay.
And I did speak to Ms. Whipke this afternoon and she has the same opinion as I do, I'm fairly certain.
Okay.
And, and I had voiced the same thing he just said, that the only problem I would have, I want to make absolutely certain that it's, we're on legal grounds to accept the bid, and I think we are. But, I mean, we all absolutely want to follow the law either way.
What, Mayor, what is the, um, is this something that we need, that's necessary right away? Can we discuss this again at next Committee of the Whole or, on Monday? Do you know?
Well, I think his, the, the truck's been sitting outside. I don't even know that he's using it. I think he's using it minimally. I believe he's using his instead of using what's out there, rather than, um, tear it up a little bit even more or have something else go wrong with it before we get rid of it.
Does, does, do any of the other council members have an opinion on?
I, I, I've, I feel good about the Durango too. I agree with all these guys, but this is the two thousand Jeep Cherokee we're gonna be, is this, uh, the car we're gonna be using instead of the Jeep Cherokee?
Yes, yes.
The two thousand and seven?
The one we're getting rid of?
Is that, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that, are we getting, is that a trade-in too or something?
It's pretty well seen its days in the saddle for a hundred, three hundred, forty thousand miles.
I was, yeah, I was talking to Mr. Fowler today about it, a lot of mechanical problems. He was gonna see what they would give on a trade-in.
And I was gonna ask you, how many miles we usually put on that a year? Cause I noticed the last, the last time I've gotten something in two thousand and eighteen, it had one thou- one hundred and nine thousand. We put twenty-one thousand miles on it last year?
Yeah, but I'm trying to remember who you, that, that car, I think, went through several different people before. It didn't, it wasn't always zoning. I think it was, uh...
Okay.
Ernie Reynolds used to drive it, it was his vehicle.
Okay, cause in two thousand and eighteen, it had a hundred and nine, so we've, we've used it pretty much. It's just not always sitting out there, but it sounds to me like there's a lot of mechanical issues with it.
And it was, Mr. Hess used it for a while as well.
Okay.
In that before, and then finally gave it over to Bill.
Okay. So now we're just gonna use it just for zoning now?
The new car?
Yeah.
The new one will be used just for zoning, correct?
You, you had asked for...
And I, we, excuse me, I say that, but it's gonna be used for zoning, but it's...
Its primary function is zoning.
Primary, primary function, okay.
And I'm not saying that will be the only thing because then if it's being used for something else, like, oh wait a minute, that's supposed to be used for zoning and...
I understand.
Okay.
Right, I, primarily.
Right.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Sure.
Mr. Towesley, go ahead.
You had asked for opinion and it's just my opinion, I, I like the best deal in front of us, but it's not a real hangup for me either, so, my opinion.
Okay. Anything else? So having said that, then I will go ahead and move, um, that we place, uh, ordinance twenty-nine, two thousand and nineteen on the next agenda for its first reading. Do you know, uh, do we want three readings on this? Can we do three readings?
Or at least two?
Just a couple.
Two? Okay. So we'll just have that for a first reading?
With emergency?
With emergency language.
And I will second that on, with the contingency of the Law Director confirming that we can accept that.
Yes. I have a motion as second to place ordinance twenty-nine, two thousand and nineteen on the next council agenda for first reading. Clerk call the roll, please.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Authorization to purchase, um, F-one-fifty truck in an amount not to exceed twenty-four, four, twelve, sixty-seven. Um, that, what is this particular, I know this is part of our replacement plan.
This, this is going to, presently, uh, Mr. Hess is driving the, the two-fifty that we purchased last year to the left, and so, um, he's going to give that up because it's a heavier duty truck and drive the new one-fifty.
Okay. And then the, the two-fifty will obviously still be used, but it'll be used for, um, more appropriate purchases, purposes. Yeah, okay. And this is something, I know we talked about this when we did the budgeting process and this is part of our, our program of trying to keep up with rotating vehicles out and keeping vehicles current.
That's correct. There's several, several old trucks that are just literally falling apart.
And, and that's the thing, the service department had a number of vehicles, equipment, uh, that needed replaced for, for a long time and we just didn't, we didn't get them replaced when we should have. Now we're trying to get that whole department up to, up to speed to where it should be so they can provide the service that we need to, to the public.
You know, and I think one of the things that we have to look at too is there, there's a safety factor involved in vehicles that are, we've seen better days, um, so. Any, um, comments or anything?
I was gonna say on my list, I'm assuming it's nineteen ninety-nines that are getting replaced. Cause both of them say poor shape.
Yeah.
Unit nine and unit sixteen.
I mean, twenty-year-old trucks that have been used for city work have been...
Money's worth out of those.
Yeah, yeah.
He's got a, he's got a thing here, says they're both rotted out, so, I think they're well overdue.
Any further discussion or questions? I will move then to place ordinance number thirty, two thousand and nineteen on the next council agenda for its first reading with emergency language.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Letter E, um, authorization to purchase an F-two-fifty truck in the amount not to exceed twenty-seven, two fifty, one thirty. Again, uh, this is another, uh, one of the vehicles that we're replacing on that rotational program. Any discussion regarding that? Scott?
I mean, that price, uh, I don't know how many people have looked at truck prices, but twenty-seven, uh, two fifty-one for a, a F-two-fifty is a pretty good price.
Yeah.
Can I ask, um, as you've identified who and what the use is of the other two vehicles, uh, what is this one being used for?
This will also go to the service department, to be used in the service department, replacing one of the older nineteen ninety-nines.
Okay, thank you.
What's gonna happen to the older trucks?
I, I, I'm going to make an educated guess, but I would say they're probably just going to be scrapped. I'm, I'm not sure that they're safe to sell or auction.
So there's no attempt at a trade-in or anything?
I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. I doubt seriously that Ganley will give us anything for them.
Okay. I know that, um, just looking at the, this particular, um, pricing on this particular truck, we got a discount of eleven thousand, six hundred dollars, um, so, um, that's quite good, I think. Any other discussion or questions? Mr. Casey?
Thank you. Would the city do it a plan to redo the service vehicles? Just by opinion, I think it would be feasible if we bought two F-one-fifties instead of buying the, the, the zoning vehicle, if there's a veh- a vehicle available from the service department to give to him. If we did that, you'd, you'd save over four thousand, almost four thousand dollars, just on the purchase of that alone. And if you're looking at cost factors versus, uh, Montrose versus up here, it doesn't need a remote start. It's gonna cost us five hundred dollars to put a remote start. I don't know why he would need a remote start anyways. Now, just a thought.
Thank you. Any, any comments or?
Mr. Berman has had all the hand downs, uh, for a long time. He was driving one of the nineteen ninety-nines until it got so bad that we had to scrap that. That's when we got one of the, the prior two-fifties. And that's, so, we, we just decided it's time to upgrade and try to get him into something better.
My...
Yeah, and the two-fifties basically, and, and I, I haven't talked to Mr. Hess, but normally the two-fifties get plows put on them and those are used to plow some of the smaller street side streets and that, that the big trucks can't get on, at least in, in one, for around this building and that, so. I, I don't know if that's his intent, but I wouldn't be surprised if it, if that's what he did with the new one that he's getting.
I don't, I don't know if this is exactly what Mr. Casey was suggesting, but I think he has a point. If you could get the F-one-fifty and, and replacement of that, you still have a brand-new truck, but it might have a dual use because he is only using the truck for part-time. So I don't think it's a bad idea to consider.
You mean, uh, instead of one of the F-two-fifties, getting an F-one-fifty?
No, instead of the Durango.
Oh, instead of the Durango?
Right, if I understood, I think that's what he was saying, get two F-one-fifties as opposed to the Durango. You save four thousand dollars and I don't know if that's where you were going, that you could have a dual use for that truck. Because it's only, the Durango would only be used in a part-time fashion anyhow. I don't think it's a bad idea to look into.
Uh, we're, we're gonna have it on for first reading, so I think we can...
Gives us time to take a look at...
Take a look at that, so.
As far as trying to move one of the service vehicles to, uh, the zoning, again, they're ninety-nines, uh, poor, poor shape. You know, it doesn't make any sense to put another employee behind the wheel of one of those vehicles. That's why we're trying to get them replaced at this point in time, but not a bad idea on getting, uh, two F-one-fifties instead of the Durango if, uh, if we can do that.
Okay. All right, so any other discussion regarding ordinance thirty-one? I'm gonna go, I, I think we can go ahead and, uh, in my estimation, go ahead and put this on and we can still take a look at those other options, um, and if we need to, we can authorize legislation and switch some things around. So I will move to put ordinance number thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen on, uh, the next agenda for first reading with emergency language.
And I will second.
Any further discussion? Uh, will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
And if, and, um, that is, I guess, the nice thing about being able to go through a couple of readings so that we can take a look at those things and, and see what we can do. Okay, letter F, Planning Commission Resolution R-one, two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Gaynor?
Yes, this is the, uh, ordinance approving the preliminary final slash final plat- of the site plan for the Dollar General. There, if I could, Mr. Mayor, uh, do you know if the engineers have added their, um, items on that yet or not, or?
I am not sure, to be honest with you. I know that they were, it was, they were still reviewing. I don't know if that was completed or not. I haven't, I wasn't able to, uh...
I'd like to, uh, move to send this to the council next week, um, based also on final approval, uh, yeah, and if the applicant incorporates the comments of the city engineer, because there were some things missing and that's why this is worded as a slash final. We just needed, uh, I was at that meeting and they, uh, they discussed it quite a bit and decided that the only thing missing for final approval was some engineering items that was very minor. And, uh, I thought maybe this week they would have gotten together on that, hopefully, and if they did, then next week we could have it, uh, for our passing, hopefully.
I, I know that, um, I believe we have to have a public hearing on this, is that correct? Um, and, and I'll have to check with Mr. Markey. I think that we have to have three full readings on it. I don't think we can suspend on this, nor do I really think that I would want to.
That's correct.
Okay, so, we have time to get that stuff taken care of since it has to go through three readings and, and public hearing and this is something, um, that we need to take that time.
And then...
Yeah, I think that'll be on the twenty-fifth, I think, will be the final.
Yeah.
For the council to act on.
Charlotte had a few questions, uh, what exactly is the preliminary slash final plat- of the site plan?
I can answer that, I was there.
Okay.
The reason they, uh, did that was, uh, as I said, they had just minor things, engineering things, that had to be hashed out, um, concerning certain things and, uh, they wanted to pass it on to us with the stipulation that those things be, be, um, taken care of. That's why I was asking the mayor if, if they had been taken care of and if they were taken care of, then when we get the final ordinance on this resolution, um, it will incorporate those, it will incorporate those changes in the, uh, planning, uh, resolution. That their resolution will be changed to final, uh, final.
Was one of the things that, one of the things that they, they had to look at was, um, something to do with parking?
No, that's taken care of.
That's taken, okay, that's...
There was, um, some question, I believe, about, uh, the, the, uh, water runoff.
Oh, okay.
And it was something that just needed explained, I think, to the, to the Planning Commission members. And once they would have had that, I think they were all willing to make this a final. I mean, I'm not speaking for them, but I was at the meeting and that was the impression I got that they, um, John Conklin, Mr. Conklin, uh, suggested that it be worded as a preliminary final to make certain that those changes are not changes, but additions were added to it. So, once they're added, uh, the Planning Commission, I'm certain, are, are good with it. And so then all we have to do is change this to final instead of preliminary final and move it forward.
And that makes sense, cause as soon as you start putting that hard scape down as far as parking lots and things of that nature, then you've got runoff issues and things.
See, at the last Planning Commission meeting about the, what you brought up about the parking, they did approve a zoning change, or the zoning commission did a zoning change for the amount of parking spaces and, and, uh, a couple of other things they approved. So, these were really minor things. I, I heard them discuss them, but I don't, verbatim, I don't know what they were, but they were minor engineering things. So I'm fairly certain that the engineers probably took care of them during the week this week, I hope, I mean, last week.
Did, do you know if anybody, uh, consulted with Barber Ten with regards to the, the sewer, that, that intersection can handle the additional sewage? I know at one point in time, we had discussions of, of different projects down through there and running sewer lines up by the golf course all the way down and there was some concern on capacity issues. I don't know if you remember any of that?
My, my guess, I mean, I remember that being discussed, but my guess would be that that type of a use, I can't imagine would be that, would have that much of an impact. I, I, a restaurant might, you know...
Maybe a one bathroom with one promoter.
But I can't imagine that it would have that much impact, but I don't know, so, I mean, it's something that...
I bet a question that we should still ask just to make sure there's no issues and not gonna require some type of upgrade in, uh, near future.
Any further discussion?
Mr. President, um, there was a motion on the floor. My question is, is this something we should or could bring forward at this time or are we putting that off?
I, I think we should send it on to the next meeting.
I will second that motion then.
All right, I have a motion as second to add this to the next council agenda for first reading and will the, um, public hearing be, uh, next? And will the public hearing be next week or will it be the week after, the time after?
It'll be after.
Okay, all right. So for first reading, clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Mr. Carratt?
Yes.
Mr. McLone?
Yes.
Any further items to come under committee of the whole?
Really, just kind of a quick question maybe for Kerry. If we have the public hearing on that along with the agricultural at the same time, do we get any price breaks from the paper?
Well, unfortunately, I've already advertised for the agricultural district public hearing on March 11th.
Oh, that one's already advertised for?
Yes, and it will, it will be in the paper Thursday. Today's Tuesday, right?
Yeah, we had, we had tried to get as many of the agricultural districts' applications together at one time as we could. Did a pretty good job.
One of the weeks, we had five.
Right.
And that did give us a price break. But we had, we had a Stragler that came in and we're, we're finished now with all the ag districts. So this, this planning commission or Dollar General will be on its own.
Anything else?
I was just looking at the dates here. So, I mean, we could do this for March 11th, though, couldn't we? That's when the other one is scheduled.
We can, but I've already submitted the ad.
I mean, can we amend it, basically?
We will, we'll run another ad, but we can do both public hearings.
Okay.
On March 11th, but, but we're still going to incur the cost of an additional ad.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Towlesley?
I just think it's important for public knowledge that it had been stated that the Barberton Police Station was going to close last Saturday and that has not happened.
Barberton Fire.
Barberton Police, jail, I'm sorry. I apologize, the jail. Yeah, the jail. Anyhow, they are open now and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's for three weeks and the administration and the police chief are working on plans further from that. So, just so everybody knows that it is open at this point.
Yes, thank you. We do have that and we have contingency plans so that the city of Norton is not left without the ability to house inmates if we need to do so.
That is correct.
So, and looking further into the future also.
Yep.
All right. Any other items for committee of the whole? Topics for next work session, looks like we have the snow plowing services we were going to talk about and we're also looking at possibly doing the cemetery price breakdown. I think that, I think that Mr. Fowler had started to get some of that information or reforwarded some of that information to us.
Correct.
So let's take a look at that. Is there any other topics for the next work session at this point? If not, if they come up, then we'll certainly add them. All right. Do I have any other business to come before council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Let's move.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Adjourned.